Welcome to the City of Pinellas Park's City Council Meeting. Our city offers superior parks, premium recreational services, exceptional public safety resources, optimal investment opportunities, and more. Our mayor and city council welcomes you to tonight's meeting.
It is August 12th of 2025, calling to order our city council meeting. We will have an invocation by Calvary Chapel Pastor Mike, and we will also do our pledge of allegiance, so please rise if you wish. For your sir.
It's good to be here. Good evening, everybody. Let's pray. So, Lord, we just come before you today, and we thank you for who you are with your grace, your mercy, your love, your justice, and your righteousness, Lord. And Father, tonight, as pray for Mayor Bradbury and our council members, our chief of police, our fire chief, Father, and I'm asking you graciously that you would grant them this wisdom to govern amid conflicting interests and issues of our times, Lord. We ask that you give them a sense of the welfare and true needs of our city, give them a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, a confidence in what is good and fitting in your eyes. And, Lord, we ask that you give them the ability to work together in harmony even when there's honest disagreement, Father. And, Lord, we ask the personal peace upon their lives and joy in their task that they have before us, and I just ask a special prayer of protection over our police officers and all of our firefighters in the city, and we ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you.
.............................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
So, just so you know, the police chief challenged me to make bark cry. He said, "I couldn't leave until I did that." Yeah, right? So, I cannot thank everybody enough for just really the great 29 years that it's given me. You know, it was, it's just been, it's just been great. It's been, you know, my whole adult life has been spent here. Everything, you know, from, from my friends, my family, my son works here now. Did he leave? Oh, there he is. Right? So, you get the bigger, better-looking version of me for a while. You've stuck with him. But, you know, it's just been incredible thinking back of, about just how much this city has been a part of my life, my family's life. You know, I had pictures with my son and daughter when they were like six and seven years old at the Christmas parties and the different stuff. So, it's been really incredible to, to just go through that and just be able to share that with everybody, looking at, you know, some of the foot. I remember when Ricky, you know, I was knocking signs in 98 for his dad, right? And he was out there, what were you, maybe eight or 10? You know, Sandra's dad was on the council when I started back then. You know, Keith, Keith was already, he was a senior guy with the water department. He'd already been here about 20 years when I started, but it's just been incredible, incredible, incredible ride, and I've enjoyed every minute of it, you know, even through the difficult times, you know, we got through some really hard times the past few years, and it's just been great, and I just can't thank everybody enough. Chief Hughes, the new fire chief, is gonna be great. He's about the same age as I was when I started here, but he, he's gonna be great. He is one of the smartest people that I've ever met, and it's been a real pleasure working with him. Eric, you know, really one of my closest friends ever. I just appreciate everybody so much, so thank you.
It's been a pleasure to follow you around.
It's been a pleasure to follow you around.
So good to be here. What a bittersweet moment to have our chief leaving after 29 years. So, thank you for your service, Chief Slattery. Wonderful to be here. I'm here, Representative Lindsey Cross, Representative for District 60, including the majority of Pinellas Park and parts of St. Petersburg and Lealman, and I just wanted to take the opportunity to provide a quick recap of the 2025 legislative session. It was an unusual one for many ways, many reasons, but most of all because it dragged on for an extra 45 days. There were budget discussions and things that were being worked out between the two different chambers, and so instead of a 60-day session, it actually went 105 days, but we were able to come up with a balanced budget of about $115 billion that serves the people of Florida, and all of us were, were very grateful when we were able to, you know, cast that final yes vote for the budget and get back to the district. As your representative, I wanted to share some highlights, some of the policies and budget items that I sponsored this year. I'm grateful that we were able to get some proactive things done, particularly in the areas of hurricane preparedness and emergency response. We all felt the pain and in some cases are still am from Hurricanes Helene and Milton. I want to commend you and all of your staff on the work that you did to prepare residents and businesses and really having fewer disruptions I saw in this community than many other places in Pinellas County and along the Gulf Coast, and that's because you work together so well and have been so proactive. But that wasn't the case in many parts throughout the Gulf Coast, so I was able to work on some policies in a larger emergencies bill, SB 180, that ultimately passed. Some of these new proactive changes include requiring every single municipality within the state of Florida to have at least one pre-approved disaster debris removal site so that if there are floods or other reasons that people have debris in their yards, that every city and every county has a place that they can temporarily stage that material. And I know that you all were proactive and had those identified, but some of our smaller communities did not, and we're really scrambling at the end to try to work with the county or work with their partners to try to find places to, to put that debris. Now it will be a requirement for each of, each of them to have at least one site pre-authorized by the Department of Environmental Protection. They can go in on a site with a neighboring community, so some of the smaller beach towns, for example, as long as they have an MOU that, that outlines who has what percentage of the site. Another proactive step is the Department of Emergency Management will now be creating a template, an emergency management template for every city and county to do. Again, your community has been proactive and has an emergency management plan, so I appreciate the work that you have done, but again, some of our smaller communities did not have the, the plans in place, so when we had the storm surge and the high winds from Hurricane Helene and Milton, they were not as prepared as they could be. We also had provisions and that emergency bills that has more regulations and oversight over construction cranes. We saw the impacts of one that fell over during Hurricane Milton in the city of St. Petersburg and caused tens of thousands of dollars in property damage. Fortunately, that happened in the evening, not in a residential building, but it could have caused injury or loss, loss of life if it, if it had impacted another building. So now there's more proactive oversight for those construction cranes. There was also a, a bill that was included in a transportation package that will prevent drivers from driving too fast on flooded streets and creating an excessive wake, which can push water into homes and businesses, causing property damage. That's something that we saw as a problem, not only during the hurricanes, but even these heavy afternoon rainstorms. We had several of them this weekend. This will give our police officers, the sheriff departments, the tools they need, first of all, to educate residents about this new law and, and to have citations and fines associated with it. It is a moving violation. I worked closely with the sheriff departments and the police departments in this county and in the district to make sure the language was correct, and it's something that is enforceable for them. And then finally, another policy I'm proud of is something that will help move us forward towards having more affordable housing by partnering with our religious institutions and allowing them to create affordable housing on pieces of land that they own, either on the, the land where the church or the synagogue or the mosque resides, or an adjacent parcel, because there is a lot of areas that could be upzoned and help to, you know, alleviate some of the housing crisis that we're seeing. So as a provision in the Live Local Act, we now have this policy, which has affectionately been called the Yes in God's Backyard Policy. So those were a few things that I was proud to work on and get across the finish line this year. I was also able to secure close to $3 million in direct appropriations for the community, including some resilience work in St. Petersburg, work to support some of our nonprofits such as the St. Petersburg Free Clinic, Goodwill's Industry, R Club, and most importantly, I'm here to present you with a giant check for $750,000 for you to help upgrade your citywide lift stations with alternative power, backup power, so that if we have a storm or a hurricane, we're not going to have disruptions of services that will cause water quality issues or disruptions for your residents and businesses. So I appreciate being able to work with Senator DeSigley and your lobbying team to get this across the finish line. So thank you for always coming to me with your needs and your request, and I'm thrilled that we're going to be able to help you out and help the residents of this city.
Thank you, Rep.
The accounting groups here, can we cash that tonight, you think? We do want to thank you, Representative Cross. Representative Cross has always been a huge supporter of us. We petitioned the governor to rename Park Boulevard after you. He denied it. I made a sign for you anyways, but listen to it anyway. Put it in your office.
While you're doing that, Lindsey, thank you very much for your efforts for the city of Pinellas Park and its citizens in years past, as well as with this for our lift stations. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. It's a pleasure to do it.
She's gotta fill it out again next year. Are there any citizens that would like to come up and speak on anything that is not on the agenda this evening? We offer three minutes for the citizens to come up and ask questions of city council or staff about something that's going on in the community. Seeing none. We do have a few items that are quasi-judicial, so at this time, if you are going to speak on a quasi-judicial item, we ask that you stand and be sworn in. And that includes item P1.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Moving on to Section 2, Approval of Minutes. Councilmember.
Thank you, Mayor. Make a motion. We approve regular council minutes of July 10th, 2025, as on file in the city clerk's office.
Second the motion.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please push your buttons that were here. There we go.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. And as you can see, those that are here and those that are at home, it shows up on the video with us pushing those either yay or nay buttons so that you can see what our votes are, just in case you can't hear us on the mics, which happens a lot. Moving on to public hearings, item P1, which I will not be voting on because the company that is doing this one I work for, and I get a salary, I don't necessarily benefit from this project, but I do get a salary from them, so I have filled out my proper forms. Enough said.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Madam Mayor. That takes us to item P1. This is ordinance 2025-19, an ordinance of the city council, the city of Pinellas Park, Pinellas County, Florida, admitting the city's official zoning map by providing for a change in the zoning district for a certain parcel of land generally located, parcel number 1730166975011809 and 1730166975011806, and more particularly described in Exhibit A, which is attached here to and made a part hereof, changing the zoning district from rural residential to single-family residential, R3, and adopting a master plan and supporting documentation for residential planned unit development, ARPUT, overlay with the underlying single-family residential, R3, zoning for a 10-lot, single-family subdivision, certifying consistency with the city's adopted comprehensive plan, providing for repeal of ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith to the extent of such conflict, and providing for an effective date. This is a second and final reading of ordinance number 2025-19, which will be handled as a quasi-judicial matter.
Thank you. Item P1, ordinance number 2025-19, turning it over to Megan.
Good evening. My name is Megan Montesino. I'll be presenting P1, which is REZ-2025-00004 and PUD-0425-00003. The request is to rezone from rural residential RR to single-family residential R3 with a residential PUD overlay to develop a 10-lot, single-family home subdivision. Shown here, outlined in yellow, is the subject properties, generally located at 11227 60th Street North, which is north of 110th Avenue. Shown here is the land use residential low, RL, current zoning, which is rural residential RR, and the flood zone is X, which is a low-risk flood zone. Shown here is surrounding max allowable densities. Currently, the site is RR, which allows for 2.1 units per acre, and they are proposing R3, which allows to, up to 4.3 units per acre. Just to the south is R2 zoning, which allows 5.8 units per acre, and to the west, you have T1, which allows 8.7 units per acre, and R3 as well, which is 4.3 units per acre. And to the east, you have P zoning, which for multifamily allows up to 12.5 units per acre. Shown here is the proposed master plan. You can see outlined in red are the 10 single-family lots, and there will be, it will be a private gated development with a private right-of-way, common HOA areas for the private drainage easements and ponds, right-of-way dedication will be given to the city, and then there will also be an amenity, amenity boardwalk. A summary is that the property is 3.41 acres and will be rezoned from RR to R3 with a residential PUD overlay for a 10-lot, single-family subdivision. Existing residential low RL land use is compatible with the proposed R3 zoning. Density, as mentioned before, currently is RR zoning, which is 2.1 units per acre, which allows for a maximum of seven lots. Proposed R3 zoning is 4.3 units per acre, which allows for a maximum of 14 lots, and the applicants proposing 10 lots. The 10 proposed lots meet the minimum R3 lot requirements, which is a lot width of 80 feet, lot depth of 100 feet, and lot area of 10,000 square feet. The applicants requesting a PUD due to a private road and the layout and design of the subdivision, internal road utilities and stormwater ponds will be private, maintained by the HOA. Right-of-way and sidewalk easements will be dedicated along 60th Street North as required by the subdivision regulations, and the developer will be required to perform a sanitary sewer study for the lift station servicing the site and upgrade the facility if needed. The findings are that rezoning from RR to R3 with the RPUD overlay is appropriate based on surrounding zoning. The proposal meets the intent of the proposed R3 zoning per the Land Development Code. The requested map amendment is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the adopted comprehensive plan, as well as the regulations of the Land Development Code. Staff, if approved, staff recommends the following condition, that the developer shall perform a sanitary sewer study for Lift Station 56 to determine capacity and projected impacts of the proposed development. Based on the findings of the study, the city may require the developer to perform upgrades to the facility. On June 5th, Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this case, as well with the following condition, as mentioned before. And I am here as well as the developer or the applicant, if you have any questions.
Yes, Megan. Was this property properly posted?
It was.
And what do you consider properly posted? If you're driving along the main corridor, you should be able to see the sign that there's a change to the property. Is that correct?
There, yes, there should be a sign posted. We have requirements per code on, if there's like a certain amount of feet of frontage, on how many signs should be posted, as well as the size of the sign.
Because I know driving north and south along the main corridor there, you couldn't see a sign or read a sign. The only one that could see a sign was coming off the road directly across.
Off 112?
Yes. I mean, nobody driving up and down that road, main corridor.
Right.
That's going to be affected by this redevelopment would even known that it's going to be redeveloped. And I even did call Nick. Is that correct? And you were gonna look at it. What'd you find?
We added a second sign.
No, there was no second sign added. Well, I drove, I drove by it again before I even came to the meeting tonight. There's no second sign there.
We got a request on August 8th to put up another sign, and staff did say that they put up another sign on August 8th, same day the request was put in.
Well, I can just assure you, there's no second sign there and had, regardless of what staff says. And I think in the future, so this don't happen, that, you know, posting one sign 12 by 18 inches, that's one foot off the pavement, that nobody can read passing that property, well, I think we need to change how we post properties that are going to be rezoned.
Okay. We can look at the code.
So I recommend that we postpone this item properly posted for the posted amount of time, required amount of time.
Yeah, that's up to you guys.
Yeah.
A decision.
Yeah, that's, that's my motion. That's what I recommend. I think the people who are going to be affected by this redevelopment ought to know that it's going to be going on, and you, driving north and south, you cannot tell that that property is posted for redevelopment.
How, you also send mail, right? So how did y'all find out about the meeting tonight that's here?
It's not on this.
Not this one? Got it? Okay.
Yes, they do get mailers for PUDs specifically. It goes out to 500 feet around the property, from the property line.
Okay. I mean, for me, there's like no scenario in which it can be a suggestion that people didn't know this was happening tonight, for me. So if that's what the concern is, I'm not gonna argue with that, but also trying to be respectful of everybody's time and work being done on this.
And I agree with you, Ricky, except for within 500 feet, there's a lot more people that are going to be affected by this rezoning.
But, and they didn't get mail?
They didn't get mail, and they don't, and they don't see a sign either.
They mailed. They got mailers.
Within 500 feet.
Yeah, within 500 feet of the property line.
Exactly. That's what I'm saying, but the majority, there's a whole lot more people 500 feet away from this property than there is sitting right at the property, is my point.
I'd just caution the council on testifying and providing evidence as you're the quasi-judicial officer in this proceeding.
What's that mean? What's that mean?
Well, your staff has sworn, been sworn and provided testimony. What it, what it means is you're, you're asked to review the evidence in the record. The evidence in the record is being provided by staff and the public and the applicant and their agent. And so just being mindful of, of the council's role in the proceedings as the quasi-judicial body.
Exactly. Thank you. For what? I don't know.
Does the city council have any questions of staff? Seeing none further, I will ask the applicant to come up. Name and address for the record and whether you were sworn in or not.
Good evening. Hushkawai, Northside Engineering, located in Clearwater, 300 South Belter Road, and I have been sworn in. As Megan eloquently described the project, one item I would like to add to it, to, to, to her testimony, is, is that this project is also being covered by an overlay. I'm sure you folks listened to Forward Pinellas, and the overlay would be PUD. So based on this PUD, we are restricted to the site plan and the number of lots and units that we're proposing. Specifically, RR or R3 allows for 4.3 units an acre. However, the, the, this RPUD restricts it to 2.9. So even though the current RR allows for 2.1, current zoning allows for 2.1, we're requesting 2.9. Even though it's advertised for 4.3, again, I'm just alluding to the overlay district that restricts it to 2.9 units an acre, not 4.3. Allowed is 2.1. So we're 0.8 units an acre is what we're requesting here today. And we will be more than happy to meet the conditions of your staff's requirements with related to the lift station. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
City have any question, city council have any questions of the applicant? Seeing none. Is there anybody in the audience? Do you have, do you have a question?
Yeah, I got a question. Would it be possible to go back to the allowed number of buildable lots to seven? Would the developer be interested in that?
I'm sorry.
Do you want me to repeat what it says?
Yes, please.
It's, could you project on the microphone? It's just hard to hear.
You heard me last time, so you heard me this time.
Understood.
I was, I was wondering if there'd be any problem going back to building seven lots.
Yes.
There would be. Thank you.
Councilwoman Reed. I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So on the build of this, so whether, when you build this out, or any property, let's just say, and if you were doing seven lots or 10 lots, you bring in the same, you build the whole property to the same level, right?
Yes, drainage-wise, you mean.
You just would be, if it was a seven lot, like it's zoned for, you, the lots would just be bigger.
Yes.
Right? But it would all still be built up, and it would still all be doing the same thing that is happening.
Yes, the zoning code allows for a certain, what they call, impervious surface ratio.
Right.
So whether you have 10 lots, or 14 lots, or seven lots, the impervious surface ratio is still the same.
Throughout the whole lot. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just making sure, the city council? Okay. Is there anybody in the audience that has any questions of the applicant or city council or staff on this item? Name and address for the record and whether you were sworn in or not, please, ma'am.
I'm Luis Ferguson. Yes, I was sworn in. I reside directly north.
Address for the record, please.
11253 60th Street North. This is directly north of the property. I just have a question on the environmental resource permits that you get. How many of them do you get? And when are they approved by SWIFTMUD? How often does SWIFTMUD check them to make sure that permits are being fulfilled properly?
Yes, sir.
I'll be more than happy to address your question. So the plan not only goes to SWIFTMUD, also the city staff. There'd be a lot of eyes on this project. SWIFTMUD, which is at ERP, will approve the plan based on the design, and they will be requiring us to certify after it's all built that the construction has met the approved plans. So we have to certify to SWIFTMUD that every aspect of the design has been met. After it's constructed.
So before, they don't.
Before, they have to look at the project and they have to permit it. Once it's permitted, they have to, they have to look at the project and make sure each code, mostly from drainage requirements. So once it's approved, then we can go to construction, and we will be inspecting it very regularly and make sure the contractor is meeting all the erosion regulations and drainage requirements. And once it's finished, we have to request an as-built from a surveyor. Surveyor has to go out there and take every point, every construction aspect, and give us an as-built survey, and then if it is inconsistent with the design, we certify to SWIFTMUD and the city, as well as DEP, because they're also looking through the sewer and water. Have to make sure that all aspects are, are meeting.
So do you make sure that the infrastructure takes a handle of additional sewage, water runoff? Excuse me, am I going to need you to come a little closer to the microphone for me?
I was just, I was just asking him who makes sure all the infrastructure is going to be able to handle the additional population, since it's probably already overwhelmed with all the new development on our city.
If, by infrastructure, if you mean sewer, the city's looked into it, and we certainly have to analyze to see, you know, what the capacity of the lift station is, and if it needs to be upgraded, we are, we are conditionally approving it, we're conditionally accepting that we will improve the lift station. As far as the water, it's basically the same thing. I don't think there's any issues with water. And stormwater, that's the city and SWIFTMUD.
Do you have routine inspections by SWIFTMUD that?
Yes.
They come and make sure that everything.
Every three years, every three years, we have to submit a certification to SWIFTMUD that, you know, forever and ever, it meets the approval.
And who is ultimately responsible for maintaining the drainage and everything, or is that the homeowners?
Homeowners association.
Also, I just wanted to mention the, last year, we had the two hurricanes back after, one, one after the other, and I went to a shelter. The first shelter I went to was closed because it was overfilled. The second one I went to was open, but quickly became filled and locked the doors. So I don't know where they plan on putting all these people, if they're going to get more shelters, if that's in the plans, because it's inevitable that, you know, we're going to need more shelters for all this population.
What evacuations are you in?
We're in D.
Okay.
But we fled very badly, as most of you probably know. But when they're building all of this next to us, and it already floods, like, in the back of our property, about two feet deep, I just don't see, you know, I'm not an engineer, you know, but I just can't see how it's going to keep water off of, more water off of our property. And Keith is correct. Well, actually, there is two signs, but they're both facing west.
Oh, great.
So you can't see them when you come down the street. You have to stop, if you're going north or south, you have to stop and look to your side. You can't see them coming down the road unless you're coming off of 114th.
Or whatever it is.
Yeah. So you can't, you can't.
See there? I drove by, I was calling, telling the city they didn't put up a second sign, because you drive by there, you can't see it.
Yeah, I just saw both of them.
That's ridiculous.
But yeah, you've got to stop and look this way, because you cannot see.
Yeah, and I think that really has a lot to do with the, the people further down.
Yeah, we've talked to our neighbors, and they don't even know anything about it. I mean, farther down, where they, it's even less elevation, where all our water goes, they have no clue.
Yeah, nobody knows.
What are you talking about? So.
That's why I was hoping to delay this until we could advertise it differently.
Right.
But apparently there was no.
People here, if that was the case, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Reed.
Megan. I lost my train of thought now. So with the infrastructure, maybe, I don't know who I'm asking this to, if it's going to be staff, or if Hush is going to answer it, but being a private gated community, and with the infrastructure that'll go in, who does that? Who pays for all that? And who pays, like, is the water, we've had lots of things about the water meters, but who's, is there?
It's a condition of the approval. It means the developer would have to, developer would have to do a study and also pay for the construction of the lift station prior to CO.
And then all the infrastructure underneath it, all of that would be all in it because it's private?
Yes.
And then what happens if the homeowners association goes defunct?
We take care of it.
I've never had to worry about that, but I guess it could happen.
There's lots of them that go defunct. Like, we just come up here a few times, and, and, you know, homeowner associations, I don't, I don't know, man, that's, that's another issue that.
That's a legal question.
Okay. I think, I mean, we all know that I have a farm, and it has been built up around. I get it, but I also get where they're coming from, you know? And there's no way out of that because of the way that they, the Tallahassee has made it to where we have to build up everything new coming in. Seven sump pumps later on my property, it is crazy when it rains. I am the lowest piece of property just about on 102nd Avenue, so. So I, I get both sides of this. I really do. But thank you.
Yes, we have to design it according to codes.
It, I, yeah, but what happens is, is that it, it turns around and, I mean, I get that, but, and you're doing exactly what you're supposed to do, and then where the, where it's supposed to be and how high and all that. But nobody's taking into consideration the properties that are next door and behind it. Way, way up, bit behind, it, it floods. That two-foot swell, it doesn't matter. I can show you rivers running on my property. And it's going to happen. It, it is. Anywhere that there's not built up is going to happen. Because it's just, we live in a beast of Florida. We do. But, but I appreciate it. I just want to know about the infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, hold on.
Councilmember Seville.
Yes. So that's going to be a private sewer system, private reclaim, and private potable?
It is whatever the city.
Well, what are you, what's the developer proposing? I, I know it's a gated community. Is it private? Is there easements for utilities?
There will be easements. There will be easements. Yes. There'll be ingress, egress, utilities, and drainage easements.
So the city is going to be maintaining the utilities, the water and the sewer?
Well, I would have to discuss that with your staff. If they need it to be dedicated to the city, we'll be more than happy to. If it needs to be maintained by our, you know, association team, we'll be in agreement in any case.
It's all private? Master meter?
Yeah, master meter. We're putting in a master meter.
Master meter. So if one person gets a leak, they shut down everybody?
Yeah.
Why not?
Thank you.
Do it in the Deer Beach, why not Deer?
Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to come up and speak? Name and address for the record and whether you were sworn in or not when you get to the podium, sir.
My name's Joseph Rokal, and my address is 11253 60th Street North. I'm directly north of this property.
And you were sworn in when everybody, when everybody was standing up and being sworn in?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I was listening to what the lady said, the young lady that was up here a few minutes ago. I'm going to have to check for you guys. And it sounds like they're preparing for a lot of action stormwise. I don't get this. They're zoned for seven, as it stands right now. They wanted to put 14. It's like a kid in a cookie jar. Can I have one cookie? And they stick their hand in there and pull out about five. And they said, no, you can't have 14 houses here. So they come back, now they want 10. What's wrong with the seven? I don't see why they have to, I mean, it's bigger, better, because I know you'll get more revenue for the city, but it's, I, I think the, it's not worth it. It's just the, you know, the repercussions of this. That whole area around there, they probably got 25 houses they've built in the last couple of years. There's no way SWIFTMUD, and they're built up. There's no way SWIFTMUD can look at that and say, with this area around here, the populations have doubled in the last 40-some years I've been here. And I just don't, I guess, I guess what I'm saying is, is if whoever votes for this, can they tell us why they're voting? What it is, is they see as a plus to this, outside of a developer making money off of it and leaving, and leaving everybody else with the mess down the road. Because I guarantee you, these storms, I used to think these hurricanes were no big deal. It's a joke. They scare the hell out of me now. I'm terrified of them. And this flooding is, is, this area around here is always flooded, and this is making it worse. Thank you.
Thank you.
Applicant, would you like to come up and answer questions?
Megan, would you please show the slide that, show the slide that showed the densities around the property? So property to the south of us, and I can't really read from here, is five, is that? Five-point units an acre. Property to the west of us, northwest, how many units an acre is that?
Less than one. It's 0.8. Oh, northwest, sorry. That is 8.7.
8.7 units an acre. Property to the east of us.
That is 12.5 for multifamily.
Right. So the property is surrounded by all these high-density zoning, and we're asking for 2.9 from 2.1. I would say we're well, well below, obviously, most other properties with their density. I mean, don't need a calculator for that, right?
So your point being what, Hush?
I don't have any point.
I don't think so.
I'll be more than happy to answer any further questions.
Thank you.
Name and address for the record and whether you were sworn in or not, ma'am.
Kimberly McAvoy Sorensen, and no, I was not. I was not going to talk.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, oh, they're right. There you go.
Name and address, please.
82424 New Circle Drive, North Pinellas Park. I'm confused about two things. The gentleman here said that after they do this development for the SWIFTMUD, is that what? That they don't have to check it for, for three years. So if they put a development in, why isn't somebody checking it in a year or sooner than that, and why are we waiting three years? My other question is, I'm not clear on what we've decided on with the signage. When the lady here said that the sign was put up, as the staff said, that it was put up directly where the other sign was, and there is no sign on that, a whole, a whole entire property, that whole length of it. So I, I don't know what the decision is there. I'm unclear about that. I don't understand the whole why we wait three years to have a SWIFTMUD study. The lady's already telling us that there's significant flooding, which we experience in our area, so, you know, I know that that's the situation. in our area, so, you know, I know that that's the situation. So none of this is making sense to me right now and I know that they're saying that they put a sign up and they're saying, and it's now been confirmed that they did, but it's in the same spot as the other sign, which makes no sense to me.
Can't see it.
So I don't understand this. And I know, like, when people say, well, the letters get sent out, I can tell you, I live in a retirement community, and I can tell you that the elderly people in our retirement community do not understand a thing that is in those letters. And I know everybody says, well, come here. I'm sitting here and I'm still like, I don't have a clue. So why isn't somebody coming out to where the areas are going where they have retirement communities and explaining it to these people? Because we don't have this knowledge, we don't, I've never heard SWF mud before. This is the first I've ever heard it. And some of the stuff, I'm looking at this and I'm like, okay, what am I looking at? Because, you know, and we got one of these for one near us and I'm still, I'm always clinging to these two. So what does that mean? What is that? I don't understand that. And I'm much younger than a lot of the elderly people in our community and they're very upset. But because they're so upset, they don't know what to ask and they're intimidated. And so you guys are dealing with a system where you know you're dealing with elderly people who are intimidated and don't know the things to ask and feel very insecure about this whole situation, or very concerned about their livelihoods and what's happening to them. And I feel like there's a really big disparage between what you're expecting of the, of residents in the area and what elderly people are capable of understanding to the degree that you're just putting it out there, like, like the development stuff, like, 80-year-olds are going to know what all that means? Some of them have never seen this. I, I'm going to be 63, I've never seen anything like this and I would never understand it. So I think it's unfair to just say that, you know, well, if the letters were sent out, there's not a lot of real detailed explanation in there.
I'm going to ask the applicant to explain the SWF mud information to you as well as possibly staff if they feel like they need to answer anything.
Let me just, let me just address the easy one. First, I have plenty of folks that live out in the vicinity of your community and I can assure you based on the phone calls and emails I get, majority are right on top of it. However, SWF mud, the really easy thing with SWF mud is we don't regulate SWF mud. We're the city of Pinellas Park. SWF mud's a completely separate entity and I don't, I don't really think that's something that we, you know, I'm, I'm sure Hoosh can provide you with some information, perhaps after the meeting, we don't need to, to go through, it's just not us. Our notices that we provide are statutorily required by the state of Florida and that's what we do. I, I think it's a tough thing and, you know, citizen engagement is the biggest challenge for local government because we're out there putting stuff out there because we're required to, but nobody really cares until they're mad about it. And that's equally frustrating on our end of it because the information's out there. You can, any of the agendas we put out, all this stuff is attached to it, you can scroll through, look at it, and there's plenty of phone numbers to, to call and ask questions. And I can't, I mean, we're the most accessible level of government. You can see me in the store and talk to me, you can email me, you can call me, you can text me. So I think that, that general notion, I reject a little bit, but, because that's what we're trying to do here, but I just don't know if we need to get in this civics exclamation, explanation right now, but I'd be happy personally to sit down with you and, or come out and talk to your community about some of these things and how we can stay on top of it. But I just don't know that this is the forum to do all that right now and I really appreciate your comments because it's equally frustrating for us and we're looking for that engagement. I get excited when I see a room full of people. I don't care if they're mad, what it is, because I like to have that engagement. I'm with you, I promise. I don't want to get us too far off.
No, that, I, I was, as city attorney about to state, there's a, there's an ongoing philosophical debate during this quasi-judicial hearing about the difference between actual notice and legal notice. And, and that's an ongoing debate that happens civically and otherwise. I was just going to remind the body that we are here on an ordinance for rezoning. The quasi-judicial concern before you is whether the property meets the criteria necessary for this rezoning and whether you, you deem that appropriate. And so ultimately, that is what is presently before you and that is what you are looking towards consideration. And I believe at this point, the applicant has had their presentation, staff has had their presentation. If there's any remaining public proponents, mayor, it would be proponents, opponents, any public commentary to come forward and then we should close that portion and proceed back to staff and applicant final comments.
I guess I haven't gotten the answer about the sign.
They say there's two signs.
Right, in the same place.
But they're both facing the same direction, so you can't see them if you're driving north and south. But for the 10 people, yeah, apparently. But we'll make changes in the future, apparently. I hope.
We only allow the, the people to come up once.
She hasn't been up.
Yes, this ma'am, the lady in the Caribbean shirt, I was getting there.
The presiding officer's got that.
By all means, please ask staff questions, ask the applicant questions so that you can get the additional items that you want to ask, by all means. Ma'am. Name and address for the record and whether you were sworn in or not.
My name's Deborah Schneider, I live at 5968 115th Circle North, and I live at the park that dips down that you were speaking of.
And were you sworn in?
Oh, I was not sworn in, I'm sorry.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I would like to second what you had mentioned about the sign. I go up and down that street twice a day usually, weekends, not so much. Friday was the first time I seen it, I was like, holy cow, look at that sign. And I see it's like, what, two days later, I'm at a meeting that was not broadcasted properly for the.
I agree.
People in the immediate area, just seconding it. I do have great concerns about the flooding. There is a new development right across the street, Kitty Corner, and we have tremendous concerns about the water as well. Last hurricane that came through, people had water in their houses to their knees. It was bad. The ditches are still full of debris that haven't been cleaned out. So there's things that still need to be addressed and I have all my faith in the system, SWF mud. I know a lot of times things are overlooked just to make the money flow. I understand progress, but I think we need to really think about this. That used to be a horse farm there and it floods every time it rains. And I'm not talking puppies, I'm talking water, sitting water for days. And those people that are going to be affected, it's going to be bad flooding, that's if it's really built up high. But then it's all going to flow down to my house at the end. And I've been there 30-plus years. Luckily, I've never had water come in my house, but it's been close. That's really what I'd like to address, to see a little bit more flow of communication. I'm not sure if this gentleman's the same builder as the builder across the street that's getting ready to pop up in that new development. No, you're not? Okay. I'm not sure if that's private or not. I'm assuming you're a private held builder?
Engineering company.
Engineering company, okay, so somebody privately is going to own that land and sell from it and be deed reserved, good?
Yes.
Okay, I'm all for progress. Pinellas Park has grown tremendously over the years in a good way and I think we need to keep that going forward and we need to be smart about it. We need to make sure we got the sewer, the drainage, the lights, the sidewalks. There's hardly any areas over there that have sidewalks, you know, just because it used to be farm country. Everybody had their horses, cows, emus, all that's fading away, we're kind of losing our charm. As being a nice little city of Pinellas Park. Kind of sad. But like I said, I understand progress and I just wanted to go on the record to state that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the audience that hasn't spoken that has any questions? We generally give you an opportunity to come back and counterstate items. Do you feel like you need to say any additional information?
So everybody lives in a subdivision. And look across the street, look to the south of us, you know, people go subdivisions and they build properties and they develop land. Typically, as a part of zoning, you don't really need to come up with a drainage, design drainage calculations, typical Euclid zoning, you just bring it, you know, a survey and request rezoning. In this particular case, we're more specific because of that RPUD because we have an overlay district that had been submitted to staff. Now we have to also be careful with other aspects of this project. And the overlay district, the RPUD, is merely to restrict the number of units to 2.9. If we didn't have the RPUD, the developer later on could go and build 4.3 units an acre, which is a lot in R3. So this RPUD is restricting us to 2.9. And because of that RPUD that restricts, restricting us to 2.9, we also are dealing with, you know, the site plan and typically drainage is not really a part of it, you know, it's just understood and the staff reviews and any concerns, you know, we have to go back and forth and design accordingly. Just since I'm up here, lady asked about SWF mud and said, why do they have to wait three years? We don't have to wait for three years. Prior to putting this project to operation, we have to certify that all aspects of this code has met. Prior to anybody can move in, we have to certify and SWF mud will come and everything will have to be certified. And then three years, every three years for the rest of their lives, SWF mud would need a certification. So I hope I've answered anybody, everybody's questions.
With that, I'm going to close the public hearing, second and final reading, and entertain that motion by city council. Nice, Mayor, Caddell.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance 2025-19, public hearing, second and final reading.
Motion dies for lack of a second, is there another motion? Councilmember Seville.
Yes, thank you, ma'am, mayor. I'd like to make a motion that we deny ordinance number 2025-19, public hearing, second and final reading.
Second.
Motion has been made in second.
Before you vote, council members, the motion has been made in the negative. So the motion is to deny the ordinance or for the ordinance to fail. So just to be very clear, as you vote, a yes or yea vote is for the ordinance to be denied, the, the relief requested to be denied. A no vote is against denial, it's a double negative. This is why we often move in the affirmative and act in the affirmative. But when you're voting, when the motion is to deny, if you vote yes, you're saying, I am in favor of denial. I just don't want there to be any confusion as you cast your votes.
Thank you for that, sir. Motion has been made in second to deny and your voting will show up here in just a moment.
Ma'am, we'll just do a roll call vote on this if you don't mind.
Okay.
Mr. Seville?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Butler?
Yes.
Mr. Caddell?
No.
Mayor abstaining. That is a vote of three to one, so the ordinance fails. The relief requested is denied. With that, we move to item P2, Madam Mayor. Item P2 is ordinance number 2025-17, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Pinellas Park, Pinellas County, Florida, annexing into the city a certain parcel of land generally located at 6908 124th Terrace North, together with the adjacent right-of-way of 124th Terrace North and legally described and depicted in Exhibit A, which is attached here to and made a part hereof, providing for amendment of the legal description of the corporate boundaries of the city, providing for the assignment of the city's zoning classification, providing for repeal of ordinances or parts of ordinances conflicting herewith to the extent of such conflict, and providing for an effective date. This is ordinance number 2025-17 by title only on second and final reading, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Item P2, ordinance number 2025-17, public hearing, second and final reading. I am opening the public hearing and sending it over to Danielle.
Thank you, ma'am. My name is Danielle Stewart and tonight I'll be presenting items AX-2025-00002 as well as LUPA-0425-00003, items P2 and P3 respectively. And so this is for the annexation and the future land use map amendment for the property located at 6908 124th Terrace North. So on, on the screen here is the aerial map of the subject property. It's about 270 feet east of the intersection of 124th Terrace North as well as 69th Street. The future land use map designation is currently designated as residential low in Pinellas County and the request for P3 is to designate it as residential low upon annexation into the city. And same goes for the zoning. So the subject property is currently zoned single-family residential R3 per Pinellas County zoning code. And upon annexation, it will be designated a single-family residential R1, which is, it's, it's similar to the surrounding area. So the subject parcel is also located in flood zone X, which is an area of minimal flood hazard and on screen you can see those other flood zones included in the nearby vicinity. And here's a site photo of the property, it is, there is an existing single-family home, there is no proposed development or changes to that property. And so the finding, findings for this case are that the subject property is contiguous to the city and meets all of the annexation requirements outlined in Florida statutes. The RL future land use designation and R1 zoning designation have been determined as the most appropriate for the property and the request is consistent with the Land Development Code and the comprehensive plan. And so I do want to briefly touch on the Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation for the panel, or for the parcel, I'm sorry. For item P2, P&amp;Z does not provide recommendations on annexations or annexation agreements, but for item P3, that LUPA, on June 5th, 2025, the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of the LUPA with the condition that the annexation ordinance be approved by council as well. And so with that, I'd like to thank you and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Does city council have any questions of Danielle? Seeing none. Is there anybody, the applicant or anybody in the audience that has any questions on item P2 or P3, since it's companion? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing at its second and final reading and entertain a motion by council member Butler.
Thank you, ma'am. Make a motion, we pass ordinance number 2025-17, public hearing, second and final reading.
Motion has been made in second. All those in favor, cast your ballots.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Moving on to item P3, ordinance number 2025-18.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, this is ordinance number 2025-18, an ordinance to the city council of the city of Pinellas Park, Pinellas County, Florida, amending the city's official land use plan map by providing the land use designation of residential low for certain lands generally located at 6908 124th Terrace North and more particularly described in Exhibit A, which is attached here to and made a part hereof, certifying consistency with the city's adopted comprehensive plan, providing for repeal of ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith to the extent of such conflict and providing for an effective date. This has been a reading of ordinance number 2025-18 on second and final reading by title only, this is item P3, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Item P3, ordinance number 2025-18, public hearing, second and final reading. I am opening the public hearing, turning it over to Danielle, just in case we forgot anything.
Nope, and I'll, I'll just go ahead and formally say that I'd like to submit the previous presentation that was given for item P2 for item P3.
City council have any questions on item P3 for city staff? Anybody in the audience that has any questions on item P3? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing at its second and final reading and entertain a motion. Councilmember Butler.
Ma'am, make a motion, we pass ordinance number 2025-18, public hearing, second and final reading.
Motion and second. All those in favor, please vote on your ballots.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. Item P4, resolution number 2025-07.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, this is resolution number 2025-07, a resolution of the city council of the city of Pinellas Park, Pinellas County, Florida, approving the submission of the 2025 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan to the Department of Housing and Urban Development, authorizing the mayor to execute the contract for the annual allocation and providing for an effective date. This has been a reading of resolution number 2025-07 on first and final reading by title only, item P4, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Item P4, resolution number 2025-07, public hearing, first and final reading. I am opening the public hearing and turning it over to Rebecca.
Thank you, I am Rebecca Stevenson and I am the grants coordinator.
I am Rebecca Stevenson, and I am the grants coordinator in the Community Services Department, here to present the CDBG Annual Action Plan, P four, resolution twenty-five oh seven. In accordance with twenty-four CFR Part ninety-one, Community Development Block Grant, CDBG grantees are required to submit an annual action plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, forty-five days prior to the beginning of the grantees program year. Our program year twenty, twenty-five action plan summarizes the actions, activities, and resources that will be used to address the goals and needs identified in the city's twenty, twenty-three through twenty, twenty-seven consolidated plan. During the, during the CDBG program year twenty, twenty-five, the city of Pinellas Park will receive three hundred and sixty-one thousand, three hundred dollars in funding from HUD. This action plan details the two priority areas for which these funds will be utilized, public facilities and infrastructure improvements in the amount of three hundred, thirty-one thousand dollars, three hundred, to the Harmony Heights Project, and planning and administration in the amount of thirty thousand dollars. This is from our Harmony Heights Project, the construction of the sidewalks and paving in the Harmony Heights neighborhood. And in September of twenty, twenty-three, the Phase One A has been completed, and that's Fifty-seventh Street North and Fifty-sixth Way North. Phase One B is forthcoming. That's at Fifty-eighth Street North and Fifty-fifth Way North. And as you see, it's in three phases. We're actually in the middle phase, so to the left has been completed, and then right down the middle and to the right is the Phase One B. And this is photos of them, you know, demolition and in the project. And then here is the finished project for the Harmony Heights Project, and that, that is it. Thank you. Anybody has any questions?
Thank you. Councilmembers Sebel.
I'd just like to say thank you. This changes people, people's neighborhoods, changes their lives. The more we can do with this, the better, and I just want to thank you all very much. Just let it expand throughout our whole community, because it gives people a different sense of their property. They start painting their houses, putting up fences, putting in the driveway, you know. So it really, it changes, excuse me, it changes the community. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Any additional questions or comments from the city council? Moving on to, oh, no, excuse me. Is there anybody in the audience that has any questions on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing at its first and final reading and entertain a motion by city council. Councilmember Butler.
Workhorse tonight. Mayor, make a motion, we approve resolution number twenty, twenty-five dash oh seven, first hearing, first and final reading.
Second to motion.
Motion's been made in second. All those, cast your ballots.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Moving on to item P five, our conditional use.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is item P five, a conditional use approval for an increase in maximum height from fifty feet to fifty-five feet in the light industrial M one zoning district. This is the, a public hearing, it is first and final reading of this matter, and this is a quasi judicial matter, so we will need to swear any witnesses and proceed as we did previously with staff presentation, applicant presentation, and comments.
Thank you. Item P five, I am going to, before I open the public hearing and before I hand it over to Todd, I'm going to hand it over to Nick, just for a little explanation of...
Before we get any exposition, can we have them sworn, just to...
They were.
Okay, just swear once for the night, all right?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Well, a little explanation on Live Local. Nick, I'm going to come down there.
Yes.
Little easier. So I'm going to talk two things and make it as brief as possible, because I am doing a presentation on Live Local in September more fully.
Yes.
So Live Local Act, it's in the third version. It's the latest bill with seventeen thirty that was recently passed. And in the second, the previous bill and this bill, what they did was clarify simply what can, what is shall, what that means, and what can be done, and what is administratively done. So this project that's before you, the portion meets of the development itself, of the actual number of units, and setbacks, and parking, all that, met administratively. What you're seeing before tonight met the forty percent requirement, it meets the eighty to one-twenty AMI of the Live Local bill. So that's that portion. What's before you tonight only is they're exceeding the height limitations, and the Live Local Act in seventeen thirty, within one mile, you can't get higher than one mile in height than within one mile, which is fifty feet. They're asking for fifty-five, I believe. So that's something that's under your purview, thankfully, something, the five feet of height, under your purview, decide whether that is needed based on the findings of the staff report. So that's what's before you. So Live Local allows you above the requirements of the Live Local Act, that state statute, and local administrative parameters of the city, which is that fifty feet that we allowed under the little Live Local.
And under the Live Local, we have no jurisdiction on the number of units that are going in that property.
That's correct. Now, I wanted, that's correct, and...
Thanks to Tallahassee.
That's, yeah, you could say whatever you like. So, but understand, it does go through a vetting for infrastructure and all, everything you hear about permitting, it still goes through that, it's not exempt from that, but the use itself and how it interplays within the neighborhoods, that is, that's the preempted portion.
Was there a staff recommendation on this?
Staff recommendations in our reports, we don't have a recommendation specifically.
Okay.
We want to explain that.
Let him do his presentation. I just wanted to cover the Live Local portion, because I know there's going to be questions about that.
And for those that are here after, Live Local is a state mandated requirement to meet affordable workforce housing within eighty to one-twenty percent of the AMI, so for us, it would be about sixty-four, sixty-five thousand pro capita.
Thanks. And before we throw it to Todd, I just want to clarify one thing Nick said, as far as this quasi judicial hearing, as with all quasi judicial hearings, you're making your decisions based on the full complement of testimony and evidence presented, not just the staff report, but staff report, any evidence presented by the public, his sworn testimony, the applicant, their agent, and otherwise.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Nick. Item P five has been read, public hearing has been opened at its first and final. I am turning it over to Todd for the explanation from SAP.
Thank you, ma'am. This is a unique project. So I'll be presenting item P five. My name is Todd Byron. I'm a planning coordinator with the city, and I am presenting item ACU zero five two five zero, 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 one, zero. And the case, if I can turn this on. The case is a request for conditional use approval for an increase in maximum height from fifty feet to fifty-five feet in the light industrial M one zoning district. Here is an aerial map of the property. The subject site is on the southeast corner of Forty Street and Gateway Center Boulevard. Also, keep in mind on the bottom right-hand corner, Epic Apartments, which I'll bring up in just a second. Moving on to the land use map, we see that the area has a future land use of IL Industrial Limited. The portion with the Duke Energy Transmission Lines is a preservation. Here is a zoning map showing that the area is zoned M one light industrial, a flood insurance rate map showing that portions of the property are X, X shaded, and AE flood zones. And a brief summary, the applicant is requesting conditional use approval for a height increase from fifty feet to fifty-five feet in this M one zoning district. The request is similar to nearby developments, Epic Apartments, which I pointed out, was approved with a height increase of up to fifty-eight feet, and just southeast of that property was Cortland Satori Apartments, which was approved for a height increase of up to seventy-eight feet. And of course, the overall multifamily design is proposed to be developed in accordance with the Live Local Act, which requires administrative approval, at least forty percent of the proposed units are designated as affordable. This will be enforced by a declaration of covenants and restrictions, which will run with the land and require annual reports. So, you know, just for clarity, today's request is not for the multifamily units themselves, but for the allowable height of those units. And the specific section of Live Local that is applicable here is, you know, state statute one sixty-six point zero four one five one seven, which states, a municipality must authorize multifamily and mixed-use residential as allowable uses in any area zoned for commercial, industrial, or mixed-use of at least forty percent of those units, and that proposed development are rental units that for a period of thirty years are affordable. And in this case, the property is zoned industrial, and the developer does propose to meet that affordability requirement, and so since they meet state statutes, they are allowed to proceed. However, of course, the height allowed under Live Local is only fifty feet, which is why we are here today. Here are some concept plans showing the structure with the fifty-foot height requirement, and these are the plans with the fifty-five-foot height request, if it's approved. It won't increase the number of units, it really doesn't functionally change much. And here's a concept rendering with that proposed height increase. Here's a site plan. It's a, or there's going to be five buildings, three hundred and eighty-four units total. There's about a hundred and forty-four feet or so between the apartment buildings and the property line to the south, so there is a bit of a buffer there. Conditional use criteria for this project, for height increases, first requirement is reviewed by planning and zoning, followed by approval of the council. This, of course, is in progress. The second requirement is that all setback requirements shall be increased by fifty percent. We've looked at the site plans, these requirements are more than met. And some findings, the proposed height increase is consistent with the purpose and intent of the light industrial zoning district. A proposed height increase meets the conditional use requirements and review criteria for section eighteen dash fifteen, thirty-one point ten of the Land Development Code, and the request is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the adopted comprehensive plan and the regulations of the Land Development Code. On July third, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this case, and I'm here to answer any questions about this project or Live Local in general, and the applicant is also here with a presentation and can answer some questions.
Thank you. Councilmembers Sebel.
I think I'll wait till I hear their presentation. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. City council have any questions of staff? Seeing none. The applicant here this evening? And I believe you know the DRL name address sworn in.
Thank you. For the record, Kevin Reali, four oh one East Jackson Street, I have been sworn. I have printouts available. I was asked to bring that, did you, do you need me to distribute those, Todd?
Yeah, I can put them out there.
Staff asked us to bring those. Nothing will be different than what is in the presentation there, it's just a printed copy. So we're here tonight requesting additional height for this development, and what I want to go over my presentation is really how narrow the request is. Of course, you've had Mr. Oona and Todd just speak about this development. Just, this is already spoken, so just very briefly, it's about twenty-four acre site off of Gateway Center Boulevard, access is proposed off Gateway Center Boulevard. It is approved via the Live Local Act, so there's two ways to proceed under Live Local in the city of Pinellas Park. You can request preliminary approval, or you could actually go straight to construction plans, where essentially you propose to the city a site development plan that meets the code requirements. It's very difficult for financing purposes to jump straight to number two, so we proceeded to request approval of a preliminary site plan, and that's the site plan that staff was showing, and I'll show that on a later slide. But what's important to reiterate here is that this approval is already done, and the request we're having here doesn't change the units or the development's feasibility. So what I have here is I've taken that site plan that was shown, and I've tried to overlay it on the aerial, and then I darken the areas that aren't buildings. And so what I'm trying to show here is where the buildings are located and the scale of the buildings compared to the size of the site. And so you have, the buildings are all set towards the center of the site, that's meant to maximize the setbacks. You have parking and landscape buffers and ponds located around the buildings, and then a pond in the center of the building, and those ponds are all for stormwater purposes. So the issue is not that fifty feet isn't enough, the issue is that Pinellas Park has a very cut and dry height definition. It basically just says measure from the bottom to the top. Now, that's not, that's not particularly, there's nothing wrong with that, but what we typically see in codes is height will be measured, or there'll be allowances in height based on parapets or mechanical equipment or things of that nature. And so with that very straightforward definition of height, it became difficult in design to add architectural features to the property. So as I go through the rest of the slides, I want to emphasize that the developer here is asking for this height variance, not to increase the developable area, doesn't change unit size, doesn't change unit count, doesn't change the site plan, doesn't change anything inside the building. What they want to do is they want to spend more money to add architectural features so that the AC unit, the condensers can be put on the roof, and they can be shielded rather than having them on the ground with final fencing around them, and so that you can have the architectural, even, the architects even were explaining to me that the downspouts for rainwater and things like that are improved with this, because without the parapets, they can't add the fenestration changes. I'll try not to be repetitive, but you're going to hear a lot of the same things, because the criteria and the requests overlap a lot to that extent. So the request is for five feet of additional height, and it's hard to see from this distance, but there's a red line that these two side-by-side buildings, it's just the portion above that red line, it's just the ankle part of the roof. It doesn't add inhabitable area, it doesn't change the floor plan or anything like that. And now I'll go to the next slide, because the end, this view from the end is not really descriptive of how it changes the buildings. But then you see, the bottom picture would be the requested design, you can see how there is architectural features along the roof line, and the, that can't fit under the fifty-foot height. And so the request is to basically allow these architectural features, which increase aesthetics and also allow the mechanical equipment to be placed the way in the modern development prefers to place it, which is elevated and shielded from view. So this is, you know, staff use the same rendering that we have. What's important about this slide here is, so this is taken, taken, this is a rendering, right, but this is from an elevated position near where the roadway would be, right, and so you can see a person would be lower than this view, and you can still barely see that pitch on the top. This request will be very hard to see even from a person standing on the side of the road. You'd have to be either elevated or very, very far back to notice it, and if you're far back, you're not going to really be able to distinguish it. So what I'm going to do in the next few slides is, there are standards of review specific to conditional uses. It's not a variance request, your code treats the two differently. And so I've tried to paraphrase those. I have the actual review criteria here, so if my paraphrasing isn't clear, I'm happy to read from the code. But essentially, there's criteria, and then there's the two specific requirements, which are planning and zoning review and city council review, and then also to increase the setbacks. So starting with those special requirements, we're here today to meet the first one, and the second one is to increase the setbacks by fifty percent. The setbacks here are, Todd mentioned in the presentation, but I think it's close to two hundred feet. The setbacks are greatly exceeded, and that's not going to change even if the denial happens today. That's the best way to design the site, and so that's the way it's been designed from the beginning. So those requirements are met by the design and by this process. So then there's the review criteria, the conditional use review... So then, there's the review criteria, the conditional use review criteria. And if I was to summarize this, basically, it's a measure of impact, where a variance request would require some sort of hardship. The conditional use request is saying, "What is the impact and what is the benefit?" And so, the, starting with the first paraphrasing I'll say is, "What are the adverse impacts to the public interest?" This is a very minimal request. It's not habitable area. It doesn't change the development. It just allows the developer to put more money into the architecture and the design. And, you know, this is a bit abstract, but often codes, when you, when you increase height, you increase setbacks. And this is a sloped roof as well. And so, really, the higher you get, the more that setback is felt, because it's, it's not a flat-roof structure. And then, again, repetitive here, but the code considers increasing setbacks a good way to mitigate, and we're increasing those significantly. And so, it's our proposal to you all today that the minimum impact actually is offset by the setbacks and the increased quality of design. The next review criteria says, "You can't justify it based on something in the area that, we're not basing this on any other, any other development in the area." The next criteria talks about scale, placement, orientation, design, appearance. This is repetitive, right? We're doing this for design purposes. The scale is minimal, and so it kind of is a repeat of the first criteria there. No change in intensity, no change in development from that regard. The next review criteria, "Use and scale is not inconsistent with the neighborhood character." The Gateway Center District, they're, but because of the Live Local Act approval, use is not an issue in this request, and the scale is minimal. So again, I'm being repetitive, and I'm just following the criteria here. Not to diminish user enjoyment or other property in the neighborhood. The change, if you're standing on the property line, would, you'd have to be trying to see the difference. So, there's a very minimal impact to neighboring property owners. Doesn't impede any orderly development. It will have no impact on development in the area. And then, the next one, I'm going to paraphrase even further to say nuisance, right? Is this going to create any nuisance? And it's not, it's not going to change. If anything, putting the AC condenser units, you know, might actually benefit a nuisance impact, but everyone has AC condensers. I don't really think that's, that's a particularly strong point, but I'll just mention that. Theoretically, it improves that.
In the industrial area, we do not allow the AC units to face the single-family homes. So keep that in mind.
And the design here is to put them all behind, they're all to be shielded. That's the goal, Mayor. And then, the last few criteria here, "Land size is sufficient. It's 24 acres. There's no sufficiency issue. There's no archaeological, historical, cultural impacts, and there's no change to traffic generation, because the units won't change whether they're without the conditional use And so, you know, in conclusion, the criteria is really asking us to measure the impact against the benefit, and, you know, we believe that the increased expense and effort in the architectural design is worth the minimal impact of the additional five feet of pitch roof. And I'm here for any questions. Thank you.
Does City Council have any questions of the applicant?
Thank you.
Don't go too far.
No.
Because I'm sure audience does. At this time, it is open for the audience to come up and ask questions of City Council, City staff, or the applicant. Name and address for the record, and whether you were sworn in or not.
Helen Tipton, 82435 New Circle Drive. And yes, I was sworn in. Mayor, I don't agree with the proposal. The reason is, I don't think the project itself is appropriate, so I don't think you need this variance. And when I say that, I'm asking the question, based on what you stated before, are you telling me that based on this law from Tallahassee, anybody can go out, buy a piece of property that's zoned industrial, and say, "Nope, I'm going to use this loophole, and I'm going to put up this high-density apartment complex"?
You got it.
It's not a loophole. It's like the St. Louis Arch.
It is a rule that Tallahassee has sent down to all the municipalities. So how do we fight Tallahassee? We can't fight City Hall, because you guys don't have control over it.
We have to fight Tallahassee.
About four and a half hours north. I'd recommend 19. There's some grapefruit along the way.
Well, because you do realize-
You literally have to call your representatives, tell them that you do not like the bill that was passed, that you believe that it is impeding on you, as a citizen's, rights to decide what happens in your community. Because they've taken that right away from City Council. So you would have to call your representatives.
Hopefully, our representative was here tonight, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
She's one of- Maybe she should have been here.
She, she's one of.
Okay, so-
All we're voting on tonight is whether they can go from 50 feet to 55 feet.
So, one of the, one of the slides had a couple things in it that I disagreed with. One of them was, it had something about the usage of the surrounding community. This project is surrounded by 55-plus mobile home parks. It is not surrounded by apartments. There's apartments out on Gateway Center at 19, and the Epic Apartments are well away from these mobile home parks. There's three, two mobile home parks in 155-plus community. There is no place for children. You put 400 units in, and you've got kids running amok, coming into our communities, because there's no bike trails, there's no parks, there's nothing for them. So where are they going to go? And the latchkey kids, because parents have to work, especially if they're affordable housing parents, the latchkey kids tend to have a little bit of a wilder time. And who are you impacting now? Your senior citizens. So, I don't see a reason for approving this height variance, because I don't think that this project at all should have been approved. We do realize that with this project going in, you guys are going to have to put a traffic light in at Gateway and 19. And the traffic on 40th is going to be horrendous. And right now, we have a lot of golf carts and seniors driving that. And that's because of Walmart being there. People already cut through that area, because they don't want to wait for the lights down at the Walmart. But it's going to make it that much worse. And Walmart parking lot becomes a street now, because there's only one way to get out of that area and go south. And that is to go all the way down to the Walmart, if you're on the east side of the street, I think. The side that this project is on. The only way to go south is to either go up to Mainlands Drive and do a U-turn, or drive 40th Street all the way down through the Walmart parking lot and go out the Walmart light. So something needs to be done about the traffic, introducing almost 400 new units. Many of them are probably two cars. What are we going to do about the traffic through there? That's going to become very dangerous, and I don't think it is sustainable at all. Also, the flooding. That is a wetland area. I don't know if any of you guys are familiar with that area. It's swampy as can be. So where are they sending all the water? Into my community? I live directly, I mean, my house is almost in those pictures of the area itself.
Maple Drive's on our picture here.
Pardon?
Maple Drive is on our picture here.
No, New Circle Drive.
No, New Circle Drive. If you bring up the, the picture that was included-
Right here, yeah.
Yes, New Circle Drive, just south. I live on New Circle Drive, and, and we already have problems with flooding. And our lift station over there, you know, we have to get extra power to pump it out. We've got problems, and I don't think there's anything that we can, I don't think you should approve this particular ordinance. It may not slow them down.
Anybody else that would like to come up and speak, please? Name and address for the record, and whether you were sworn in or not.
My name is Stephen Sorensen. I live at 82424 New Circle Drive. And I live, I want to show you, and I am sworn in. This track right here is ran by Swiftman.
We have to have the-
Okay. That, that track right there is a drainage ditch. It's never cleaned out. There is a machine sitting on the north side of 40th right now, been there for a month or longer, for Swiftman to come in and scrape the sides and scoop the stuff out, and they haven't done it yet. And this happens every year, every year, every year, every year. They don't take care of it. So, proposing another 400 units in there, you're going to create not just a traffic problem that she's got, but you're going to create traffic, foot traffic through our community. So now, we're going to have to get gated community. And that's big bucks. We don't have the infrastructure on our front gate to allow three cars to come in and have a turnaround spot. So it's going to take major construction for us just to secure our property. We already have a problem with theft. Big time. I got it on film. I was on the board of directors for the HOA, and we, we have cameras. Police will not do a thing. They can't use it. They, they come and look at it, and they go, "Yeah, that's good." That's about it. They can't use any of the footage we have. So, we have bikes in there that are stolen monthly. We have golf carts that have gone missing. Sometimes they just drive them out, put them in the ditch, right across the way. You know, they do it. And it's kids. We got them on film. There's about 17 of them that come in, and they start at one end, and they test every door in the houses, and they test every door on the cars. And if your car doors unlock, everything you've got in your car is going out on your lawn. And anything that's stealable, they're taking it. And they do it all the time. So, by creating this behind there, I'm not against developing it, but I don't think apartments is the right answer. I mean, that just brings in massive amounts of traffic. She already covered all that. But there's nowhere to go. There's no playgrounds, there's no parks, there's no nothing there. If they have a pond in between all their buildings, that's going to suck up their area to have any playgrounds for their kids, too. So, I don't, it's old, it's old. I know I didn't come in on this at the right time. We did not get notice.
Don't cry.
No, no, no notice.
We don't even know when this was approved.
No sign.
This was the first notice that we got.
No notice.
And this is the height increase.
Folks, there's one person at the microphone. They get respected when you're up there, and just let him have his time, please.
Yeah. I'm, I'm done. I just, this is the first notice we got, and there's no signage on the road anywhere.
So, just a clarifying point on that. That notice is the only notice there would have been, because it's a state law that it's approved. Like, we do not have, there was never a hearing for this. They passed a law in Tallahassee. We are required by state law to administrative approval. So we have nothing to notice on this project.
Well, you could deny the extra five feet, or 10 feet, whatever they want.
Since it's not useful.
Well, I think, I think it's a different issue now, right? Is it, am I right or am I wrong?
It is a different issue, yes. Name and address for the record, and-
Kimberly McAvoy Sorensen, 82424 New Circle Drive, north. It's already been stated that the extra five-
And you were sworn in previously.
Yes, I was. Yes, I'm sorry. It's already been stated that it's not going to do anything except just do architectural work. So I don't see why we need to even consider doing another five feet for an area that my community doesn't want in the first place. If it's not going to do anything except increase the cost to whoever's going to be buying there, what's the point?
I live at 82207 F Street North, Pinellas Park. I was sworn in. I came to question why this was our first notice, but this gentleman already explained. So, that, that was my gripe with this, was this thing was going in. To find out that this green space is disappearing breaks my heart, because it's where we walk and ride our bicycles around the sidewalk, all the way around the loop. It can't be this developer's first rodeo, so for him to know that he needs five more feet should have been in the original plan. To ask for a variance now, I think, is ridiculous. Or drop it down a floor. Lose that revenue and put your, put your rooftop air conditioners on. The other thing is, the flooding last year, my street was nearly waist-deep. I don't know how much concrete or blacktop they're putting in, but the canal that Steve talked about is supposed to be deeper, and he's right. There's a machine there. It's been sitting there for months. They're not cleaning it. We're in hurricane season now. We get a storm. I don't know where that extra water, he's going to have a pond, that might save them. But we're going to be flooded out. So, that's, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Judith Brady. I live at 82430 New Circle Drive, which is part of the Golden Gate Manufactured Home Community. It's resident-
And you were sworn in? Or do you need to be sworn in?
I, I was sworn in.
Thank you.
And it's resident-owned. We believe this will devalue our property. 40th Street is a one-lane, each-direction road that takes everyone on 40th Street. It's one-lane, each-direction, takes everybody to Walmart at US 19. How are 400 more units with at least two people in each unit, probably, how are all those people going to go south and north on 40th Street to get to Walmart? It's one-lane, each-direction. Is the developer going to widen 40th Street for all this additional traffic? I don't think we were given proper notice. This is going to devalue our residents, our homes, having all this additional traffic, taking all the trees out of that area. And they, you know, the developer sent this notice out in the summertime, where most of our unit owners-
How many live in our-
Three, 40 units, and about 100 or people are here during the bus season.
Most of our unit owners are up north in their northern homes. They don't even know about this happening. The developer did it in the summer, when nobody is living there. There's only like 90 of us in the park, and it holds how many?
Three, 40.
340 units, homeowners, and none of them are here. They don't even know this is going on. So I object to it. And I don't know how they're going to get all those cars down 40th Street. It's one lane each way, in Walmart's south of us. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to come up and speak on this, before I let the applicant come back up and answer questions? Yes, ma'am? Okay. After your name and address, then she can do that for you.
My name is Lorraine Desett, and I live at 9240 40th Street in Mainlands.
Do you swear and tell the truth, the whole truth, and other bits of truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
My main question is, this was approved in Mainlands, there's like over 1,500 homes there. We were never even notified. Now, a lot of our, we're a 55 and older community, of course. A lot of us are a lot older than that. But a lot of people don't have a driver's license, so they take their bicycles, they take their golf carts to go and do shopping at Walmart. We have a gate put up there because to cut the traffic down. The gate is usually up, because during last year's storm, some electrical problems happened. But the thing of it is, with all those people there, where are they going to ride their bikes? In Mainlands? Because it's very low, very low-speed zones and things, and- And, and where are they going to walk their dogs? You know, it's overwhelming, that amount of people coming to the corner of our street there. It's, when was it approved?
Doesn't have to-
It didn't have to come before City Council.
As a, as a matter of process, just because the question keeps being asked, I want to declare Randy Moore, City Attorney. There, there was no approval. Nothing has been approved yet. They are here specifically for the impact of those additional five feet. To disabuse any confusion, if they were not seeking that five feet, whether for aesthetics or functional purpose or otherwise, if they were staying under those five feet, it would never come to this room. Based on the, the way the legislate, the legislative statutes and enactments exist.
So-
And so the way that a lot of us have traditionally understood the way development works in our communities and we control it and Euclidean zoning and you know, the industrial parks over here and the hotels are here and the stores are here, that has fundamentally changed in Florida. And so, good, bad, indifferent, anybody can make their own value judgment. I'm not making one, I'm just explaining it. And so for purposes of today, all we're really here about is the five feet and whether that impact based on the criteria in the city's code is, is met. But as far as when was this approved? There was no, there was no surreptitious or secret approval. They are going through the process and if they were not seeking this five feet, there would never be a public hearing. It just goes through staff approval, not because Pinellas Park is making it that way, but because that's how Florida law operates now.
How did they get like approval to be there when it's an industrial zone?
So just to, and again, and first of all, I, I agree with, with all of you. I, I completely do. A, a lot of, there's a lot of development that happens and things that happen and things that have gone up in the past. And we've really made a tremendous impact, at least reducing the density. Because it's always a balance of people have rights to build on their property, develop whatever. We can't fight that. But we did have the ability to kind of say, hey, you know, this is, this is a problem here. We need to reduce this, it's too many. We had that decision. We do not have that decision any longer. So it's one of those things where the legislature ran with it. I think parts of the whole bill have some good intention, but this is the one that they don't care about because they get to go to Tallahassee for 60 days every year, actually a little bit more. But, but they're not here. They're not shopping with y'all. We're not eating the same restaurants. You can't come up, I mean, you can go talk to them, but like I said, it's a drive. So there, there is no process. There is none. So next time you see one of your state representatives, next time you prepare and do your research for voting, figure out who supported the Live Local Act and, and, and act accordingly, you know, whatever that is. Like I said, it had some good intentions, but this is one of them where we can't have those conversations about how it impacts your community or your community. We, it, it's, they took that conversation out. And there's several other things that has not even come to the surface as we kind of move through that things that we don't have control over anymore. So I mean, and, and I'm going to give you another whopper here. Like, when they're working on legislation or if they do some kind of amendment to the constitution thing, we're not allowed to advocate one way or the other as a city or expend resources to educate you all. Because the legislature, in my opinion, you know, we know who this benefits. So it's usually, it's a pretty easy one. But that's just the nature of it. And it, I hate it for us because it's a, obviously a very important role that I think we have in local government to make sure that we can deliver services, that it's safe, that it's the right thing. And there's some things we, we can't stop because again, that balance I mentioned. But there's conversations to be had, but the legislature took that away from us. So that's, that's where we're at.
It's all about the money.
Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to ask any questions? Councilmember Seville, do you have an applicant, a question for the applicant or just a comment?
No, just a comment. And you know, Ricky explained it perfectly. We have no control over this. You, as you saw tonight in our earlier vote, you know, there was somebody wanting to put more in and we said no. You know, so we hear what you're saying. I feel your pain. I wouldn't want to live there. Because Fortieth Street's going to be very overcrowded. But it's like Mr. Butler said, we don't have anything to do with the number of units that's going there. I myself think that the five feet would make, make the development look better. So I would go along with the five feet. But however, I do feel your pain and I do think, you know, we're putting too many people in too small a place. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
After the vote, I have a question to follow on, but you guys vote. I don't want it to weigh you with my question because it's not going to impact them.
No, and if you would like, you can, unless you need to actually ask one of us, you can ask Mr. Nick Wade. And he can answer it while-
Is he an IT?
No, he, he looks like he's part of the business.
The applicant, if you would like to come up and address any of the comments that you think that you need to address.
I appreciate you lighting the mood. I, as the city, or sorry again for the record, Kevin Rialy. As the city attorney pointed out, you know, the views that I'm expressing here about the architecture are the, the opinions of the development team. But, but, you know, understanding that the Little Local Act has its, its, yay sayers and naysayers. The, the approval today is, is very narrow. It's for the extra five feet, as mentioned. And when I was saying that nothing would change the development, I mean, the site plan, the floor plan, those things. The developers actually trying to spend more money here to do this. You know, they, they prefer to add these details and, you know, focusing on the criteria, which is that weight of, of impact of the five feet versus the benefit of, of investing that extra money in the development is, is what I would submit to you all meets the criteria. And I'm paraphrasing there, of course, but we've gone through that. So I'm going to go over any questions. Thank you.
Do you have a question?
I just have a comment. I, I do want to acknowledge that given the free rein that you have with the development, I, I do personally appreciate the efforts to maximize the setbacks because they could have also put the buildings literally right on the edge where they can look over. But, but not as bad as it would be. So I just, I want to acknowledge that, that, you know, we do appreciate kind of picking up the nature of how a lot of these are going to go and trying to make those the least impact you can. But I, I know it's just a business thing, but I do want to acknowledge that and thank that. Please pass that along to the design team.
Just a suggestion for you to hang out. Show them a set of plans because they asked about playgrounds. They asked about walking paths, bicycle paths, things of that nature. They asked where the entrance and exits going to be, which is not on our plan. So if you have a plan, you might want to spend some time with the neighbors and give them that information. That's what good neighbors do. And, you know, as far as the parapets, I appreciate you guys trying to make it look a little nicer. That's the reason why I was asking where the air conditioners were, where the elevators are, to make sure that the air conditioners are not facing them. And if it's covered, that will obviously help with the noise. Because we have had some complaints in the past and that's the reason why there's our ordinance showing where the air conditioner units, blowers, things of that nature, need to face. To be good neighbors. So please keep that in mind. The only other question that I have is for staff and I didn't ask it prior. On the plans in here, it shows the Florida Power line.
Yes.
Why isn't it on this property? Because they probably got density that they shouldn't have gotten.
Actually, they technically could have gotten a higher density if they wanted to, just per the Live Local Act. I believe it would have been upwards of 400 units. So they actually didn't maximize the density. Yeah, that, that Florida Power or the Duke Energy Parcel. It doesn't really-
It runs right there.
Yes, I'm saying it doesn't really-
The other properties on either side, and it's not on that one.
Well, that's it, right there on, on the right hand side there.
When you did your colors, it wasn't on the color one. And those things are too small to read.
Sorry.
But still, see?
Yeah, it's included, it's-
It's not green up there. I see the red line, but I don't see the green.
Oh, yeah, it's not colored green. That's, it's because the portion of the transmission line to the south is a different zoning district. I believe it's zoned for open space or something like that. But it's zoned light industrial in this particular section. But yeah, that's the only reason why it's a different color.
You're good.
And I'm going to stand on my set box one more minute. That's industrial land that you guys are touching. The median incomes that you are trying to get to add into there are the ones that need jobs. You just took a piece of property that would have provided jobs away from them. So keep that in mind in the future.
You gave them a house and they got bored.
You're shooting yourself in one foot to provide for the other foot. So.
So in this act from Tallahassee-
Yeah, you have to either come up to the mic, but we have to, we have to close it after he has spoken. So that's the reason why I asked you to go talk to staff. I figured that you would have additional questions. You have to go talk to staff because once the applicant's spoken the second time, we have to close the hearing.
That's fine, you guys-
Yes, no, go talk to Nick. Say hi, Nick.
Hi, Nick.
I want to make sure her questions get asked, or answered, I mean.
He just wants to finish this hearing, ma'am.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Alrighty. Public hearing, first and final reading, which was quasi judicial. I am closing and turning over to Councilmember Seville.
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to make a motion to approve CU 0525-00010. Public hearings, first and final reading, quasi judicial.
That's what's at issue.
Okay. All right, just double check. We have a motion in a second. Please vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
Item P6, ordinance number 2025-20.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We are on item P6 now. That's ordinance number 2025-20, an ordinance of the City Council, the City of Pinellas Park, Pinellas County, Florida, amending the City of Park, the City of Pinellas Park Comprehensive Plan by amending the land use element, by amending the transportation element, by amending the stormwater management element, by amending the housing element, by amending the parks, recreation and open space element, by amending the public schools, facilities element, by amending the intergovernmental coordination element, by amending the capital improvements element, by adding the property rights element, by adding the economic development element, by amending Appendix 1 Capital Improvement Projects, by amending Appendix 2 Data Reference by Policies and Renewing, Appendix 2 Future Land Use Category Descriptions, by amending Appendix 2 3 Maps Providing for Repeal of Ordinances or Parts of Ordinances in Conflict Here With to the Extent of Such Conflict, Providing for Comprehensive Plan Transmittal, Providing for Separability, Providing for Certification of Consistency with the City's Comprehensive Plan, Providing for Repeal of Ordinances or Part of Ordinances in Conflict Here With to the Extent of Such Conflict, and Providing for an Effective Date. This has been a second and final reading of ordinance number 2025-20 by title only and item P6. Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Item P6, no.
Happy to do so. It wasn't loud enough, I can predict.
Item P6, ordinance number 2025-20. Public hearing, second and final reading. I am opening the public hearing and turning it over to Danielle.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, my, for the record, my name's Danielle Stewart. I'm the Long Range Planning Manager for the city. And before I advance the slide, the reason why this item is before you today and why it's coming straight at second and final reading is because a few months ago, the state had informed staff that there was no record of receiving the previously adopted, previously adopted comprehensive plan amendment, which updated as, as, as Randy mentioned, which updated large portions of our city's comprehensive plan affecting our future land use, transportation, stormwater management, housing, parks, recreation, and open space, public schools, facilities, intergovernmental coordination, capital improvements, property rights, and economic development elements, as well as their appendices. And so on screen here is the timeline recapping what was previously approved in the last comprehensive plan amendment that we're re adopting, that we're hoping to re adopt and retransmit to the state today. And so as a result of the state's failure to receive our adopted amendment, we have coordinated with the city attorney on the appropriate approach for rectifying this issue. As stated on the slide deck, staff adhere to all procedural regulations outlined in Florida statutes regarding the comprehensive plan amendment process last year. But after discussing with the city attorney, we were also made aware that there is no statutory provision nor is there case law established for this circumstance. So if approved today, we will coordinate to refile this ordinance with Florida Commerce. And to recap the record of votes from the previously adopted amendment, on June 1st, 2023, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of case number COMP-2023-00001 with the condition that a couple of minor changes be made. And then in February 2024, last year, City Council voted unanimously to adopt case number COMP-2023-00001. And to clarify, the ordinance before you today is the same amendment that was approved by council back in February of 2024. No additional changes have been made. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions and so is Nick.
Thank you very much. That's an IT question.
Only IT question.
The city council have any questions of Danielle or Nick? Is there anybody in the audience that has any questions from Danielle or Nick? Are you sure?
They want a five foot period?
Well, with that, I will close the public hearing at a second and final reading and entertain a motion by Councilmember Butler.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Make a motion that we pass ordinance number 2025-20, public hearing, second and final reading.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor or whatever to push your buttons. Not mine.
Motion carries unanimously.
Moving on to Section 4, consent agenda items.
All right. Buckle up, folks. Item C1, designation of city's voting delegate. This is the Florida League of Cities Annual Conference and the action contemplated is the designation of Mayor Sandra Bradbury to serve as the voting delegate at the annual conference of the Florida League of Cities in Orlando, Florida. Item C2 is Resolution Number 2025-08, a resolution of the City Council, the City of Pinellas Park, Pinellas County, Florida, providing for the designation of the Community Development Department and the Community Development Administrator and any successor department or division as the administrative authority with the power and duty to receive, review, process, approve, and deny the submission of applications for Platts and RePlatts in the City of Pinellas Park, providing for supremacy in the resolution of conflicts and providing for an effective date. Item C3, ordinance number 2025-22, an ordinance of the City Council, the City of Pinellas Park, Pinellas County, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances by amending Chapter 18 Land Development Code, amending Section 18-1801.1 General Procedures for Vacations of Right-of-Way or Easements, amending Section 18-1801.2B Easements, providing for the inclusion of such amended ordinance in the Code of the City of Pinellas Park, Florida, providing for repeal of ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict here with to the extent of such conflict, and providing for separability, providing for an effective date. Item C4, ordinance number 2025-23, an ordinance of the City Council, the City of Pinellas Park, Pinellas County, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances by amending Chapter 18 Land Development Code, amending Section 18-109.2 Certification Forms for Final Plats, providing for the inclusion of such amended ordinance in the Code of the, Code of the City of Pinellas Park, Florida, providing for repeal of ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict here with to the extent of such conflict, providing for separability, providing for an effective date. This is a first reading prior to public hearing. Item C5, authorization to sign a three-year agreement for NeoGov Learning and Training Management System subscription with a, an estimated total cost of $95,872.64. Item C6, appointment of Parks and Recreation Advisory Board member, Shalita Mullins. The appointment of Shalita Mullins is to serve as a member of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for a two-year term to expire December 31, 2027. Item C7, appointment of Parks and Recreation Advisory Board teen member, Emily Mullins. The appointment of Emily Mullins to serve as a teen representative member of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for a one-year term to expire December 31, 2026. Item C8, reappointment of library advisory board member, Emily Mullins. Family Fair. The action is to, the reappointment of Emily Mullins to a one-year teen advisory board term ending June 30, 2026. Item C9, reappointment of library advisory board member, Trish Lee. The action is the reappointment of Trish Lee to a one-year teen advisory board term ending June 30, 2026. And I believe it may be to the library advisory board, there may be a confusion there, but reappointment to the existing board. Item C10, authorization for the mayor to sign an agreement and contract for pedestrian and bicycle safety enforcement campaign grant with the Florida Department of Transportation. This is an authorization for a campaign funded through FDOC grants in an amount not to exceed $18,853.29. Item C11, authorization for the mayor to sign an agreement for ancillary services provided by the Pinellas County Sheriff's Office with contemplated fiscal year costs of $805,532.10. Item C12, award of bid ITV 25.013 Library Window and Door Replacement. This is an authorization to award such bid with the anticipated amount budgeted for this project being $450,000. Item C13, award of bid ITV 25.007 Community Policing Renovation. The authorization is to award this bid with the amount budgeted for this project being $800,000 to Qualus General Contractors LLC. Item C14 is authorization for civil engineering design services for the Fair Lawn Neighborhood Open Conveyance Ditch from Channel 5 to Fifth, no, Channel 5 to 80th Avenue under RFQ 23.004 for Advanced Engineering and Design Incorporated. The total cost for this project is an estimated $100,000. The total cost for this project is an estimated $199,954.55. Item C fifteen is authorization for the City Council, the city of Pinellas Park, to approve the non-adverberum assessment rule and exemptions for fiscal year 2025-26. The authorization of the role is part of the standard budgeting process. Item C sixteen is award of bid ITB 25.011 Grounds and Landscaping Services for Precise Property Maintenance LLC. This is for grounds maintenance and landscaping services through the city, the account to be charged is stated in the, in the amount, with the amount budgeted for this project being $190,000. Item C seventeen is award of bid ITB 25.014 Roof Replacements Two for Professional Roofing Systems Incorporated. This is an authorization to award the bid, and the amount budgeted for this project is Item C eighteen, authorization for the first and final payment for purchase of services under the city of Charpin Springs Contract Bid 240055-B-DAS-S for Lift Station 31 Pump Out Replacements at TLC Diversified Incorporated within the amount of $161,533 to be charged to the appropriate account. Item C nineteen is authorization for the city manager to sign trade contracts for continuing non-emergency professional services per ITB 25.009. And item C twenty is authorization for Civil Engineering Design Services for the extension of 52nd Street from 69th Avenue to 68th Avenue under RFQ 23.004 with Lighthouse Engineering Incorporated. The authorized purchase amount is for $68,000 to be charged to the specified requisition number. Item C twenty-one is authorization for change order number one and final payment of emergency pump repair for pump number three at booster station number one located at 7301 71st Street to Electric and Mechanical Maintenance Company. This is a decrease in the contract amount of $451.84 for a total adjusted contract amount of $122,584.16 and authorization for final payment to the specified contractor. Item C twenty-two, authorization for engineering design services for lift station number 52, a redesign under RFQ 23-004 for Lighthouse Engineering Incorporated, this is an authorization to purchase engineering denied services for $53,000 to be charged to the appropriate account. Item C twenty-three is authorization for the city manager to sign an agreement with Carrier Global Corporation HVAC Chiller System at City Hall, the cost is $2 million and should be charged to Project 23175/260, ordinance number 2025-21, an ordinance of the City Council, the city of Pinellas Park, Pinellas County, Florida, amending Section 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 10, and 11 of ordinance number 4272, an appropriation and tax levy ordinance of the city of Pinellas Park, providing for repeal of ordinances, of all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict here with, providing for separability, providing for an effective date. This is a first reading prior to public hearing and part of the standard budget amendment done as you reach the end of a fiscal year. And that concludes all the items on the consent agenda, item C one through C twenty-four, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Reese. And thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Bradbury. Regarding the consent agenda, I would like to make a motion to pass, approve, or adopt whichever action is appropriate, item C one through C twenty-four, inclusive with item C two being first and final readings, item C three, C four, and C twenty-four being first reading prior to public hearing. The next public hearing will be held in council chambers on Thursday, August 28, 2025, at 6:00 PM.
Second motion.
Have a motion in a second, are we pushing buttons here or saying it verbally?
Yes.
That was actually the correct answer, Randy, that was actually the correct answer.
Mayor, I do have a question now, on item C twenty-two.
C twenty-two, yes, sir.
To, what is the reasoning for eliminating those stations? And we're looking at what would be, what would be the cost to put gravity in there along South Frontage Road?
So according to our master plan, with the, with the upgrade in that lift station, that we can eliminate those other ones. So that came, sorry?
I'm sorry, say that one more time.
From Pinoni, Pinoni did our master plan, and this was part of our master plan, if we upgrade that lift station, we can eliminate those other ones, and that's part of our plan, eliminate the amount of lift stations we have throughout the city.
And I can see eliminating the stations, but they're such small stations right now that, that don't require a whole lot of maintenance or cost, but to go in there and eliminate them and put in a gravity system, I would just wait for someone to come in there and redevelop along South Frontage Road. Yeah, it's on.
It's on.
Anyway, that's all, just a comment.
Is there anybody in the audience that has any questions on this item?
Madam Mayor, just to confirm, it will be a voice vote for consent?
Yes, thank you. See none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. We have no regular agenda items, moving on to comments, please keep it brief.
Patty.
Councilmember Seville.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to thank all those volunteers that are signing up to become part of the, to fill the board positions that we have open, especially the teens, I think that's awesome, these young people step up and want to, want to help make things better. I just think it's great, and just thankful for the staff we have and that our city employees, I think, are better than anywhere around in this area. We have great staff. Congratulations to the new chief. I know you'll do a fine job, but just watch out to the, from the guy next to you. Share the microphone, thank you, that's it.
Congratulations?
That's all I got. Rick?
Yeah, congratulations, Chief Hughes, and of course, thanks to Chief Schlatter for all of his service. And you know, the only other thing I'll say, I made fun of Patty, now I'm going to talk more. You know, unfortunately, we lost some city employees, we lost some people the last couple of months, we went to celebrations alive and all that stuff, and just really kind of reiterated to me, we just have a great city family, so many people, then we've lost, we lost Stan Emerson, who was a staple in the community, we lost Arlie Owens, who was a, a local legend and has deep roots in our community, so just keep all those folks experiencing loss and your thoughts and prayers, and you know, let's stick together, that's all I got.
Absolutely. Nice, Mayor.
I agree with everybody.
Okay.
I have just a, I'll make it brief. I want to first introduce Kiara Bastin, she's our new planner.
Welcome.
What a night to come, right?
They're always like this.
To Ken Lebecky, one of our longtime employees is retiring, last day is August 22nd, we're having a little party for him, I know, it's joining the ranks of the other great retirees that we have, so I want to thank him too, he's not one that likes to come out and spend time and hang out, but he's been a rock in that, in that department for a long time, one of the standard bearers of how we deliver customer service, and we really appreciate his, his time on us. And one more thing, I do want to thank staff, and they go unnoticed sometimes, even though live locals, what it is, right? When a project or any project comes in, they work really hard at making sure it meets the standard that is expected, so I'd like to thank them for that.
I just, because, did that, okay. Keep going. A lot of them are posted on our thingy, right, and website?
They are, yes. I'll be super quick, a couple of quick ones, the 2026 PAC Season Tribute Show tickets are on sale on September 2nd at the Fox Office at the Performing Arts Center, Pancake Breakfast at the Senior Center is tomorrow morning from 8:00 to 10:00 AM, and a look ahead is on, for Labor Day on September 1st, all the city offices, the library, and the city brush site will be closed.
Nothing, nothing. Dan, nothing?
She didn't mention it, but as a reminder, we have the volunteer banquet coming up. I think it's the 19th at 6 o'clock.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six? Twenty-six. That's all.
Okay. Hi, I'm Chris Torrello, I'm the new PR and media director, and been here about three weeks, and I can't tell you how much fun I'm having already. We're here to raise the brand and the voice of the city, I think we've already started doing that, and I think tonight's a clear message that there's a lot of great things ahead here, and we're going to share that. So thank you all very much for being so welcoming, and great job tonight, Mayor, great job.
Welcome aboard.
Wow.
As I tell everybody, welcome to the family. Chiefs? Are we good? I know. With that, we will say that we hope that everybody does have a blessed couple of weeks until we see you again. Everybody be safe, check on your neighbors, as Ms. Patty always says, check on your neighbors. With that, we hope that everybody is blessed, have a couple of weeks, and meetings adjourned.
See you Thursday, Mayor.